All right. Call the meeting to order for Tuesday, June 13th, 2017. And as we start out every meeting, we'll read the mission statement. Norfolk Public Schools offers a safe, joyful, and challenging learning environment that meets the need of our diverse students. Through school, family, and community partnerships, we provide an education that inspires lifelong learners and cultivates caring and productive citizens of our ever-changing world. Roll call, please.
Jeff Chalmers.
Jeff Curry.
Mark Flaherty.
Thomas Doyle.
Ingrid Larney.
All right. Public comment? No.
No public.
None? Nobody wants to say anything? No?
Uh, all right. So donations, let's see. So we've got a few in here. So we've got donations that total $2,794. And they break down as $1,175 from Advanced Band, which is a MacBook for Mr. Fouracre. NCL is provided $834, which is for some sort of breakout session. And the Beginning Band parents also contributed to the MacBook for Mr. Fouracre in an amount of $785. So do we have a motion to accept the amount?
I make a motion that we accept the generous donations.
Edouard Second?
Second.
Okay. Assuming no further discussion, all in favor?
Aye.
Okay. Moving on. Okay, so we've got to do our BIKO appointment this year. Ingrid has done this, I think, since you've started here, correct? So essentially, we can continue that practice, assuming she is willing to continue to do that.
I make a motion that we continue that practice.
Okay. So just to clarify, so that's for Ingrid to be on the BIKO, meet with the BIKO Board of Directors. Edouard Second?
Second.
Okay. Further discussion? No. All in favor?
Aye.
Let's see. So then we've got some MSA-C updates. One is the Summer Institute, and then the other is the November, which I think, Jeff, can you say you were going to try to go to one of those days? We talked about a couple meetings ago.
Yeah. If I can make two days, great, but I usually try and go down there. I've usually been down there for at least two days, so.
Okay.
We'll be lucky. Stay down for two.
Are you red, do you know, are you registered already for the November one, or?
I don't believe yet.
I haven't registered yet.
But Pam always does it early. God bless. We always save money.
Right. We have the July 15th, so we'll just, I guess, just do that again and figure out the registration.
Pam, do you need me to register, or do you register?
I usually just register one person.
Okay.
Anybody else who wants to go, goes under their name.
Okay. So have you registered yet?
I have not.
Could you register me this week?
Yes.
Perfect. Thank you.
One registration, and then if there's days that you can't make it, we'll let the other members know if they want to go in your place.
Absolutely.
Sounds good. And then there's also a Summer Institute. What was it, July 28th and 29th? Is that correct?
Yep.
In Marlboro. I don't remember this one previously. Is this a new one?
This is new, and if anyone's interested, we're happy to register you for this. They gave an overview of what would be provided on that date, but to my knowledge, this is a new summer institute.
School budgets, call send in.
28th and 29th.
28th and 29th.
So it's the 28th and 29th of July. I am, I believe, out of town.
We can leave that open, and if anyone's interested, just email Pam, and we'll register even when you have a chance to look over the description.
I won't be able to make it. I'll be away.
I am laughing at their sales pitch of "all this in six century-located air-condition hours in July." Well funny. All right, so we'll kind of put a pin in that one and revisit that one.
I think it's deceptive advertising. It's in Marlboro, and they've got a tree. Nice, beautiful beach.
All right, so.
Exactly.
Next up is, we, Jeff, I don't know if you've been at this meeting or not, but I guess in the meeting on the 20, was it May 25th?
Yes.
The King Philip meeting, a point came up, or a reference came up, that was just incorrect in nature. And essentially, what it is, to kind of break it down for us, and Ingrid could jump in, but it kind of led the listener or the viewer with that, the impression that we weren't providing all the information regarding sped children that would be coming up or into the system going forward.
Okay.
When in fact, we all know for a fact that's not the case.
Absolutely.
There was an involved process that we've followed for a number of years, actually coming up five years this fall.
Yep.
We've done the same thing. So it sort of, and I want this to devolve into a name-calling thing, but it sort of left the impression that any kind of budgetary issues they were facing, that we hadn't held up our end of the bargain, and the other districts, I guess, as well, that they were kind of caught off guard. And to be.
So that all three of the elementary superintendents received a letter on the 26th following that meeting from the Plainville Finance Director, asking us to explain and articulate our process for sharing information with KP. And it was pretty pointed and indicated that they were advised multiple times during that meeting and at prior meetings that the elementary districts were not forthcoming with information about anticipated costs. And so we were asked to provide, and I did respond to that. There was questions about whether it's possible that King Philip is not aware of these costs. I didn't address that. I referred questions about KP's process to King Philip. But we did articulate that we do have a process, and on October, in the early part of October, we share two years' worth of census data with King Philip that articulates any out-of-district placements, cost of the placement, cost of transportation, any in-district students that have special services that have a financial cost, those are also in the census. And it was at the request of King Philip that we only give two years of data. We had prior given more than that. But they've asked for two years of data, and so all three elementaries follow the same process. So it was concerning that the impression of the Finance Committee at KP, or at that town meeting, which was a public meeting that was broadcast, was that this was an unexpected cost and that we hadn't appropriately shared information.
Now, was that at the Plainville meeting, or was that the Rentham meeting?
It was at the Plainville meeting with KP.
It was Plainville Town Meeting?
Yeah.
When KP was making the presentation?
Went to, no, it was prior to that. It was there with the Selectmen and the Finance.
I was there for that meeting. I was there for both meetings. And that information was articulated prior to the meeting and in further discussions with administration. They are very clear as to the way we proceed in our systems and processes. Why a comment like that was made, I think, is a little aggravating for me, being on both committees, and I think is incredibly unfair to this town as an administration, as well as a school system, because not only have we been incredibly communicative, but we're very transparent. So.
So the thought was, and Thomas and I just discussed this, whether or not the committee here wanted to share the concern about the way that information was portrayed from committee to committee. So I think Thomas has a draft letter for you two.
Yeah, so the letter's in there. Without going through the whole thing, basically, we just want to potentially set the record straight, reiterate what the process is, correct, correct any misinformation that is out there. And again, we're not looking to make this into a name-calling contest or anything like that, but something like that needs to be addressed, and it needs to be corrected publicly because it was, just inaccurate information was passed along in a public meeting that was just incorrect. So that's the reason for the letter. So you see the letter in there, and the intent is then just to send this letter to the school committee itself, and then it becomes part of the public record as well.
Okay.
Hopefully, that's the end of the issue. From our standpoint, I believe it is. I don't think we can do it any further. That being said, if another incident or a question arises as to how, then we'll have further discussions, we'll have further meeting, whatever it takes.
Yep.
Initially, if we get any questions from the public, we'll obviously answer those. So I don't, beyond the request that came from the Finance Committee Chair, I.
I also have had.
Some parents.
I did have a group of parents request to meet to understand better the budget process in Norfolk, who also shared that they were, basically advised the same thing in a meeting with administration there. And further, that we were counseling families out of King Philip, which we'll be addressing with administration at a meeting next week. But that was a little bit separate. And I think the goal of the letter, again, is we've really tried hard to partner, and we have the Joint Special Ed Steering Committee that we're all invested in. And, you know, as I said to the parents that came to meet with me, "I really can't speak to King Philip's budget. It doesn't serve any of us well to criticize each other's process or budget publicly. We don't know the assumptions and variables they're working with." And I think that that's the expectation among the elementary three superintendents, is that questions or concerns should be dealt with directly between the districts. Misinformation and criticism of the district shouldn't be perpetuated in a public-aired meeting, because it doesn't help any of us in terms of transparency and trust, public faith in the budget process.
Correct.
So we just want to make sure that correct information is what's put out.
And I appreciate that, and I appreciate both of you not only articulating the information, but putting together something in writing that we can address with the school board, as well as administration. I'm also going to have a meeting with administration, as well as the Chair, to address this, to have something like this that never happens again, because the idea that it was done in such a manner, I think, is deplorable, because we've always been incredibly supportive of the district, and I don't appreciate that they took the role that they did.
All right. So.
I guess, do you want to vote on whether or not the committee wants to send?
Yeah.
I guess we didn't list it as a vote.
This isn't a vote item, so I guess we can't actually vote on it, I suppose, but I mean...
Concerns about the letter?
Have you guys had a chance to look through the letters? Or anything you suggested to be, I mean, as I said, we just try to be fairly to the point. Here's the issue. We hope it can be, not come up again. Give some background. That's the draft of the letter, what we intend to send.
Yeah, so the author attribution is the entire committee? Do we each sign? Does it go with your name, Thomas?
You didn't sign it because we were going to discuss tonight?
Yeah, we want to discuss it first. That hadn't been decided. It could be something that could come on behalf of the committee. That's certainly fine. To my mind, I think that's probably the best way to go, because I think that is, I think that is of greater import, to have that sort of thing, but that doesn't make a difference to me, one way or the other.
Okay.
I think the entire committee makes sense.
I agree.
Yep.
And just in general, I know you referenced the Walker Report. I think you already alluded to it, that this sort of creates or fixes some of the misinformation and puts our stance out there, but beyond the Walker Report, is there any feeling that there needs to be any more discussion among either the committees or the superintendents, or do we think we're heading in the right direction?
The other two elementary superintendents were very upset about this perception, and we have a half-day retreat with Walker scheduled with the full steering committee, which has members from all of the districts. But we also have a meeting scheduled following that with the four superintendents to discuss the process and our expectations of each other.
All right.
So I think we'll be addressing it.
Do you feel that'll resolve this kind of?
I think it's important that, it's an important conversation for us to have in terms of how we, you know, we certainly all are in a situation as a regional system where we'll get calls, I'll get calls about, you know, the KP budget, or I'll get calls about a decision that's made, and we have to refer them back to the sending district. I mean, we shouldn't be responding to those or engaging in those conversations, and I think that's what we need to discuss as the superintendents at that meeting. I think this is a little bit separate, because the school committee is responsible for budget development. So misinformation about the budget impacts the school committee's ability to, I think, build public trust around your process. So that's where I think Thomas was coming from with the idea of the letter.
To answer your question, I would hope, I mean, my experience has always been, if you just confront something and have the honest conversation, no matter how awkward that may or may not be, okay, then that's 90% of the battle. So I think that's sort of step one. And then step two is something we've, since my time at the committee and then yours as well, is we've always kind of focused on keeping the lines of communication, making sure the public is involved. We can't undermine that. So anything that could potentially undermine that does need to be addressed as well, so people feel, like, I genuinely feel people in this town think that, okay, they're completely upfront. They, here's the numbers. We think the numbers are correct. Everything, all the assumptions they made are correct. I know in just, in our union negotiations with the teachers, I mean, that's, they took that on faith. The numbers that we presented to them, here's the numbers. So they understood that those numbers we presented are correct, so we've worked very hard to make sure that's the case. I am, I don't want to say terrified, but I want to make sure we don't in any way overlook that and just start, like, taking away from that, like, a question starts lingering in the back of someone's mind. We can't have that. So I don't want to make a huge fight out of it, but I just want to just, here it is, this is the thing, please don't let this happen again. Unacceptable, but okay, we'll move on.
But I agree with you. It has to be addressed. I mean, you can't have something like this saying, "Okay, well, maybe something was misinterpreted." No. This is what we heard by multiple sources.
Right.
We need to make sure that this is not correct, and this is what we're going to do to clear it up. So I agree with you in the way you approached it.
Yeah, and plus, it's also in response to a specific question that was asked to us from a governing body immediately in another town, but nonetheless, it was someone that had asked a question from their responsibilities and wanted to know the answer. So as part of that process, we need to kind of work through this whole thing. So I guess we can just make a finalized copy of this, and then we'll all eventually sign it.
Last question is, so this is addressed to the King Philip School Committee. Does a copy of this go to anyone else? Does a copy of this go to Plainville and their Finance Committee, so they're aware of this correction?
I could certainly, if you would like CC. I did respond to Mr. Kate's questions. I answered the questions about process and depth.
Okay.
I didn't address the, any questions about the KP budget. I just explained the census data, when it's provided, what's included, and when that process. They asked if we had followed that process this year, and I verified that we had. But we could CC Plainville and Rentham School Committees, if you want me.
Yeah, I'd recommend it. It's a district. I mean, they all have heard the information. It was on a public site. They need to know that the information's been addressed.
I could see that.
And I may defer to Thomas's judgment and yours as well. I think, as you said, you want to keep this, you don't want this to be confrontational, so if anyone feels that that CCing impacts the district.
No. I think it's informational only.
Okay.
Especially considering that we've had meetings, the KP School Committees had meetings with the Finance Committee over in Rentham, the Finance Committee in Selectmen over at Plainville. I think that this information came up, the other parties have known about it, that everyone needs to be notified that we're not being confrontational, we're just being informational. Let's set the record straight. And the tone of the letter and the way it is articulated, I think, spells the information out without going beyond that.
Yeah, I think I'd be inclined to just CC them on, just for informational purposes. I mean, Bruce Kate said, asked a question, didn't respond to the, or didn't have any follow-up to the response that was given to him, so I think his questions were satisfied. But I think, in just going back, as I'm thinking about this, going back to the piece of, we want to ensure that communications there, we're a regional district, all parties of the regional district then need to be sort of aware of this and on the same page of it. So I don't think there's any downside to letting them know.
So, and that's each of the Finance Committees for each of the districts?
I think just the school committees is fine. They can circulate it from there.
And they can share with their finance.
Yeah, because otherwise, we'll end up CCing 10,000 people. So I mean, I think the school committees and however they choose to do whatever from there, Selectmen or whatever, is up to them, so.
We'll make those changes and get that out for signatures.
Thank you. So moving on to Ingrid.
All right. So the first item of business tonight is Tony Davis is here to talk about, is a recommendation to modify the salary scale for our SAC employees. So in January, the new requirements for minimum wage went into effect, and so we adjusted the salary to be compliant with the minimum wage requirements for our high school volunteers. When we did that in effect, the differential between our high school staff and our permanent staff is really minimal, and they certainly have significant more responsibilities. In a lot of other districts, when the minimum wage increase went into effect, they adjusted all the other employees by the same amount. So Tony is recommending that we, in addition to the 2% COLA that was approved in the budget process, that we add 50 cents to each step on the salary scale to make the positions more competitive with the marketplace. Her budget is in great shape, and this would be fully funded by the SAC revenue, because we've had a large increase in enrollment as well, and we want to retain our veteran staff. So Tony, do you want to, come on up to the mic if there's anything else that you want to share? And then we'll.
Just the hours that we need to fill for the before and after-school program can be difficult, and sometimes we have a hard time retaining staff because of that. We benefit from having college students come and work with us while they're going to school, but then they usually go on to other things, and we find ourselves trying to hire new people each year. So thinking about that, I think that this is important, and also for the staff members who have been here for a long time, for that gap between the two rates to be bigger, especially them knowing that the high school staff are making $11 an hour, and there's a lot more responsibility that goes into the assistant and team leader and site coordinator positions.
Good. Beautiful. You have a, must have incredible retention there. It seems like the same people are largely there.
We do, we do pretty well, honestly, compared to other districts. We really do, yeah.
And just as a comparison too, the school committee did look last year at the paraprofessional salary structure, and we did add Lane 4 and 5 to make adjustments for that, and we also adjusted the subrates of pay. We haven't looked at SAC for a number of years.
I can't even remember the last time we looked at this. Okay, so then this is all within, so within your revenues, I know going back a number of years, you had troubles with collections as far as getting all your tuitions and so on paid, but, so this is fully funded, as you said, within all the revenues itself?
Yep. And Todd felt, Todd has, took a look at it and did some projections, and feels that we very comfortably can manage this inquiry.
Okay, so no issues from that.
No, he didn't have any concerns.
Thank you.
Okay.
Awesome.
We need a vote.
Thanks, Tony. All right, so do we have a motion? Thank you, Tony.
Motion is submitted?
Yes. So submit for the recommended.
Pay increase.
Pay increase, I guess the easiest way to phrase it, for the SAC folks.
Second it.
Okay. Any further discussion?
Nope.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
You jumped on, I'm supposed to.
Say that's Mark's.
No, you got to make them quicker. You got these long-out ones. Just protocol. Read the book. The nice, thick book.
Yeah, it's holding up, balancing out a table.
Exactly. It works out great as a paperweight.
Please escape.
Well, you can't.
She's stuck. She can't go anywhere.
Okay, so the next item on the agenda was an update on my professional goals for 2017. We moved this from the April agenda, I mean, from the May agenda, so it's back in your packet. And the goals that the committee approved for me for this fiscal year are actually both two-year goals. The first professional practice goal was to work on strengthening the district's recruiting program and practices for hiring, and also for refining and improving the district mentor program. So what I did, this is the actual goals document that I submitted back in October that you approved, and I just gave you an update in bold after each action step.
Perfect.
So we have revised and published new marketing materials for recruiting. There, I believe, is a copy in the back of your packets of what we distribute at recruiting fairs. We have worked on expanding partnerships with local universities. We participated in recruiting fairs, the Merck Recruiting Fair. We've also participated in the past with Harvard University. This year, we chose to go to the Bridgewater State Recruiting Fair. They have a very strong program in special education, and that's the positions that we had open. So we went and actually got some really great candidates from that recruiting fair that night, two of which we extended offers to, so that was great. We have accelerated the timeline for advertising new positions. We advertised internally anticipated vacancies prior to the budget being approved. Then, once the budget was approved, we were able to go ahead with the interviews. All of our anticipated vacancies this year were advertised in multiple locations prior to April vacation, so we were out ahead of most districts in terms of our hiring.
Awesome.
As far as the mentor program, we have contracted out with Teachers 21. They're going to come in and do a two-day, full-day mentor training program for us this summer. We're sharing the cost of that with Rentham and Plainville. And so following that, we have four teachers who have volunteered to work over the summer revising the Mentor Handbook based on the content presented in the training. So those two projects will, the revising, the mentor evaluation, and the Mentor Handbook will happen this summer. As I mentioned, we do have the training scheduled. We have about 20-something people, 22 people enrolled in that. The majority from Norfolk, so that's great for us. We'll have a lot of people, veteran teachers, that have been trained to mentor our new staff. We are also partnering with Rentham and Plainville. We had developed a literacy course that we encouraged all our new staff members to take. We also offered an intro math methods course in the past, and we have a number of different courses offered this summer. So we're continuing to work on cost-sharing and bringing in programs that are appropriate for our new staff. The second goal is a district improvement goal, and we're actually ahead of schedule on this. This was to revise the district report cards for all grade levels. As you know, our report cards are very dated. They're over 20 years old. But we had, in our strategic plan development, decided we wanted to revise and rewrite the curriculum and develop the assessment plan prior to doing the report cards. So that was scheduled for this year. We had the curriculum directors work with the curriculum committees to go through all the standards for literacy, math, science, and social studies, and identify what we call the power standards for each grade level that we would be assessing and reporting out on. That work is complete. We did get feedback and input from grade-level teams on the reporting standards, and we did send a parent survey out in January where we got feedback from parents about what they'd like to see in the new report card. Interestingly, the biggest area of concern for parents, they wanted to see more narrative comments from their teachers about their child's development, so the new report card does have comment sections. And the other thing was more information about children's social-emotional development. The new report cards will have about 10 social-emotional learning standards that we are reporting out on. We have a report card committee that worked this spring to identify the template and develop the rating scale for the new report cards. That work is all complete. We will be using a grading scale that is 1, 2, 3, 4, and there'll be a rubric that defines proficiency, mastery, a scale that is students still practicing, and a scale that is not yet emerging. And teachers will be using that 4, 3, 2, 1 scale to report out progress in all of the key learning standards. In the fall, I'll talk more to the committee, but we will be transitioning to a standards-based report card for grades 4 and 5 as well, which means we will not be issuing letter grades for students in grades 4 and 5. The grade 6 report card will be a hybrid. They will get letter grades as well as ratings on the core learning standards. The only reason we retain the letter grades at grade 6 is because some of our students apply to private school from grade 6, and some of the private schools are still looking for a letter grade. But the letter grades don't have a lot of value for grades K to 5, so we'll talk more about that. But that's a bigger shift for parents, so we're not going to roll out the 4th, 5th, and 6th report cards until the following September. So K to 3 next year, 4 to 6 the following year. They're all, will be electronic, automated. They'll have spell check. They won't be carbon copies like what we're currently using, so it's a good step forward.
So for next year, will 4 and 5?
They'll be using the same report card that they are using now.
And are those letter grades currently?
Yes.
They are, okay.
Yep. So we'll do, what we'll do is a, I'll do a parent night in the fall for K to three to talk about the new report cards and probably in the spring I'll do another one for parents in four, five, and six. We're also working on this summer, and we'll have it ready, a parent's guide to how to interpret the new report card, so that people have information on what it means to be standards-based, what the rating scale looks like, any questions that we think people might have. So we'll have that out. Another goal was to develop the new three-year strategic plan and I'm gonna give you a further update on where we are with that later in the meeting. But we're moving forward. We did delay the timeline a little bit because we were anticipating starting in March with the Strategic Planning Committee, but because we have four standing curriculum committees running, a professional development committee and a report card committee, it was hard to recruit people to volunteer because they're already committed to several other committees. So we moved the timeline. We're starting that, the steering committee for strategic planning, actually our first meeting's tomorrow, and then we'll have two half-day retreats over the summer. So we'll be on schedule to deliver the proposed goals to the committee on schedule. We did conduct a survey in January that went out to all parents. We had a great response to that. We had like 235 parents respond. We sent a similar survey out to staff and have analyzed the results from that. I did conduct the focus group interviews with parents, school committee members, community representatives, teachers, and other staff, and summarized the data from that as well for you. We also put together packets for all members of the Strategic Planning Committee with all relevant data that they'll need in order to conduct the SWOT analysis, strengths, weaknesses, opportunities, and threats. They'll be getting those packets tomorrow. We do have a finalized Strategic Planning Committee. It has representation from across the district. We do have parent representatives. We have teacher representatives, specialists, special educators, and administrators. And any of the school committee members that's interested in joining are welcome to join that as well.
Good.
We will be, again, over the summer, working on the SWOT analysis and finalizing our goals, which we'll bring to the committee probably in September for approval, and then we'll develop the action plans for each of the strategic objectives from there. Then the last goal was, we're continuing to work on closing the achievement gap between special education students and the general population in mathematics. And we have continued to expand the before and after-school math tutoring program up at the Freeman Kennedy. That's been very successful. That is complete. I am working with Dr. Tupper and the math curriculum director to look at more diagnostic math assessment tools that will help us better pinpoint where kids are struggling. We are running two summer workshops this summer with Allison Mello and Dr. Nikki Newton on developmental math diagnostic running records, which is an assessment tool that many of our staff have signed up for. We are continuing to use Acuity and other technology tools for remediation and for evaluation and supporting our struggling students with those tools. We also ran guided math book clubs at both schools this year, and that's also a strategy for differentiating math instruction and providing students with support and instruction in areas of need. We are also running summer training for staff on guided math this year, and as we do our math curriculum review next year, we'll be looking at guided math playing a bigger role in the general classroom instruction. The other two action items are in progress, and that is working with the special education director and IEP teams to make sure we have a well-defined process for differentiating when a child requires developmental math versus special education services for math. So that's in progress. Again, these are all two-year goals, so the expectation is they will all be complete by next June, and I think we're on track for that. Any questions or?
I don't know. Very good. Thank you.
All right. The next item in your packet is the update on the strategic planning process. I kinda gave you an overview of where we are with that. Our first meeting is tomorrow. We have packets prepared for everybody, but below my cover memo, this was our plan, our strategic plan for developing a strategic plan is here, but it outlines all the action steps. And in the column on the right, I updated where we are. I think, as I said, we're, we delayed the initial meetings from March to June, but everything else is on schedule and on track.
Nice.
We did finalize the district vision statement. We did get the feedback on that. We have the committee all established. We have all the data we need to move forward.
Beautiful.
Behind that, in your packet also is, as I mentioned, I did focus group interviews. The interviews included a wide range of people. I interviewed all the town department heads. I interviewed the PTO leadership, the parent leaders group, all town department heads, so library, senior center, finance director, police chief, fire chief, selectmen, and several school committee members. The guiding questions for those focus group interviews are listed at the top. I basically looked at what people saw as the strengths of the school, what they saw as areas for development, things that they thought might be challenges in the coming year, and asked people for, to prioritize those. So below is a summary of the key themes that came from those interviews. I didn't report any individual data, only things that emerged in several different interviews. So, in summary, things that people are most proud of. Quality of teaching staff and the commitment of teachers came up pretty universally in all of the interviews. The access to specialized support staff, developmental reading in math is perceived as a strength. Teaming between teachers and communication between staff, teacher-student ratio and low class sizes, the small-town feel and sense of community, technology that's available, Makerspace 3D printing, typing and coding, the band program, academic achievement results and MCAS scores, special education programs, curriculum, social-emotional learning in the younger grades, and principals and administrators are approachable. So those were themes that came across in multiple different interviews. What people want to see preserved was sense of community, the class size, teacher ratios, recess, special subjects, art, music, wellness, and health, culture and school traditions, and the elementary feel of school. A lot of people commented on liking the model of sixth grade being part of an elementary program. Areas people thought that the Norfolk schools could work on: enrichment opportunities for students, foreign language, improving our website and the availability and accessibility of district news and information, disability awareness programs, access to childcare. There's few options in town and SAC cannot meet the demands for all families. Length of the school day, many people wanted to see a longer school day. Involving working parents in different ways. Sometimes there's a disconnect between schools and working parents because so many things are held during the day. STEM programs, which would be a science, technology, engineering, and math. Basic life skills, including banking and things like that. It's, some people commented, it's hard to support the new math curriculum at home because it's a very different pedagogy. So that was, multiple people commented on that. The integration and alignment of curriculum across the elementary districts and King Philip. I have invited King Philip to participate in the strategic planning process. I haven't heard back yet on a rep, but they, we have extended that invitation. And expansion of the pre-K. People would like to see us eliminate the waitlist. We do have 22 students on our waitlist for pre-K for next year, so it's growing. What should be maintained at all costs is class size and the teacher-student ratio. Key issues that people feel the school will have to tackle in coming years. I highlighted the three that seem to be the highest priority across class size, budget, and maintaining strong academic programs. Other issues people are concerned about: new development and potential growth, increase in enrollment, the relationship and partnership with King Philip, managing the pace of building and sustaining the small community feel, space, diversity, the changing demographics of the student population, expanding specialized and psychological service to meet the increase in students with behavioral health needs, and the lack of commercial industry to support the budget in Norfolk.
When did you say, you started doing this in January?
The focus group interviews?
The various focus group interviews.
Not until March. We did the parent survey and the staff survey between January and February and the focus interviews in March.
So the community was March and April? Is that fair to say?
Yep.
No, I'm just, I would be curious, not to rehash this, but one of the things they mentioned, though, not as big a part of relationship and partnership with King Philip, I'd be curious what that answer was. Is it slightly different today than it was two months ago? Or is it the same?
Yeah, I'm not sure.
The material, I was just kinda curious.
Yeah, yeah. It was definitely across department heads and it was across groups that that was raised.
I would have is the thought of increasing the school, lengthening the school day, which I know kids would hate, but.
We have one of the shortest school days in the region, by about 10 minutes.
If we, I don't know if 10 minutes will make a huge difference in this question, but if we lengthened the school day, would we also be able to shorten the, because the number of days the kids go to school?
180 mandated days, yeah.
So it doesn't matter how long the school day is?
No. You have to meet a minimum number of hours.
You can't make a 24-hour school day to add up to the amount of hours.
You do have to meet 900 academic instructional hours over the course of the year, but it's also mandated 180 days.
Okay.
We did ask if there was anything we were currently focusing on that we should eliminate, standardized testing, and several people talked about overreliance on technology and just being cognizant of that. Additional thoughts on how to improve the system? Important to continue to host or bring back family math nights and tech nights. They help develop a stronger sense of community. So we heard that in a couple of places. Increase the use of parent volunteers. Maybe have parent speakers on STEM and other careers. The district calendar. Possibly have a subscription for parents who want updates or notices of date changes. Consider a grant-writing position to support long-term budget challenges. And strengthening partnerships with the town library and senior center to support our curriculum. More recommendations. So again, all of this data will go to, it's in the packet for the Strategic Planning Committee, and we'll be using this data, the survey data, our budget history, our outside program audits to conduct that SWOT analysis and really pinpoint where our strengths are and develop goals that will help us move forward. Questions on strategic planning?
Do you have any insight into the expansion of pre-K and the size of the waitlist? Is that larger than you hear?
Our enrollment numbers, we're actually looking at it tomorrow. We have higher enrollment in preschool than we have. We have a longer waitlist. We also have more students with special educational needs that have already entered our program, and we're required to provide programming for students as they turn three. We have fewer open slots to absorb new students over the course of the year than we've had in the past. So we are concerned about our pre-K numbers. It's difficult to add preschool programs because we do not have space right now at HL of Day. We're out of classroom space. So we're gonna have to monitor very closely what happens over the course of the year. But we, right now, it's not just a staffing issue. It's, we don't have a physical location to add another preschool.
Do you have a feeling about what's driving that? Is there, does it feel like there's any overlap with the childcare access issue?
There could be, and I think there's also probably some overlap with development and, you know, new housing. And we have, we did have some issues with, when the over-55 housing became available, people sold their homes and moved, which we got younger families coming into the other homes. So I think it's partly, probably related to development, and it may have to do with the access to childcare as well. Yeah, yeah. So we're watching it. Any other questions? Okay. All right. The other things are pretty quick updates. You have a copy in your packet of the certified budget for BICO. They're required to send a certified budget to every member district's community, and so you can see the budget and projected expenses included in your packet. The revenue and the collaborative is in a very healthy financial position at this point. They are also seeing increasing enrollment. They've been able to keep their tuition increases very minimal. And we actually have two new districts that are looking for membership in BICO, and we're looking at that as well. But the financial picture is very stable right now.
What would that do with two new districts? What's the impact?
Well, we are actually looking at a couple of different models for that, where they would not receive the full membership discount in their first two years of membership, and then it would be prorated. So we're looking at the benefit of having additional member communities in terms of additional student enrollment and mitigating some costs. You also have, by policy, I'm required to provide a quarterly bullying report to the committee. So this, this past quarter, there were two disciplinary issues of reports of bullying at the HL of Day school. Both were investigated. At the conclusion of the investigations, one of the reports did meet the criteria for bullying. Appropriate disciplinary measures were taken in accordance with our policy and supports were placed, put in place for the student who is identified as the target. The second incident was not considered to meet the criteria for bullying, although it was handled from a disciplinary perspective and we worked with parents and families on that. At the Freeman, in the last quarter, there was only one discipline issue, a report regarding bullying that was investigated, and it did not meet the criteria. It was determined to reflect inappropriate behavior and a conflict between students and was handled according to our disciplinary policies. The next thing in your packet, we are required to post an anticipated calendar for school committee meetings. Now, they're always subject to change, but we have to post our anticipated calendar. What we've done is gone through. We typically meet the, later in August, so that I can give you an update on preparedness for opening, and then we do the second Tuesday. So this is a draft calendar, and it would note that meetings are subject to change. So we're looking for approval and a vote on the calendar.
Are you making a motion that we approve the school committee calendar?
Second?
Second.
Further discussion? Isn't, I know we're jumping away, and you just said we can change these things. Town meeting is typically the second Tuesday in May, am I correct on that?
Right.
Do we wanna go ahead and just move that now or wait?
We can do that. We wanna move it to the 15th is what we usually do.
Yeah, we're gonna be moving it, right?
Yep. We wanna prove it with that one change.
So go forward with the motion with that change. Everybody all right with that?
I didn't hear.
So the town meeting is typically the second Tuesday in May, and we're lined up for that, so go ahead and move it to, our scheduled meeting to the 15th. Obviously, yeah, something's gonna change, but now we might as well. It's gonna get moved anyway.
Good catch. Sounds great. That's why we pay you the big bucks.
Yep, that's what I get for. All right, all favor?
Aye.
And then the last thing tonight is, we wanted to have a discussion about whether the committee is interested in moving forward. I think, Thomas, you brought this up, with paperless school committee meetings. And we did look into, with our tech team, what the processes would look like. And what we would do is set all of the committee members up with a Gmail, Google account, and then Pam will put everything in Google Drive. Is that correct?
Yeah, 'cause in the Google folder.
And then you would be able to access the school committee documents.
It's already set up.
Yeah, some people have it. You'd be able to access it from home or anywhere you would like. And then what we would do.
God bless you. God bless you.
If people wanna choose that, what we would do is have available at school committee meetings, everybody would have an iPad with the packet there so that you could pull up the documents or review that. If anybody is interested in paper copies, we can certainly continue.
No, I love this.
All right, cool.
No, this, I mean, I appreciate this being dropped off nicely, but that's, that takes time. I don't know how long it takes to drop this thing off. Two hours, once a month?
Yep.
Putting this together, the minimal expense as far as doing it and everything like that, so to me, it makes all the sense in the world.
Yeah, it's just not, there's no, there's no requirement of dropping anywhere. More than likely, Pam has already got the stuff in the folder.
Plus, it's easier if you have to update something, a document change. Sometimes you're handing us something like, oh, wait, you have to do with this.
Yeah, AutoSync. So essentially, it's a live folder. So whenever you make any changes to it, it automatically is updated with everybody.
Yep. And we certainly, if anybody, I mean, some people prefer paper copies. We can certainly send a paper copy to anybody that would like it or bring a paper copy if you want them.
There's only one guy missing, so that's a quality.
Paper copies here, though, so if someone wants.
Yeah, we do always have paper copies here for the audience, so. Do people wanna move forward with trialing that?
A thousand percent yes.
I don't think we actually need a vote on it, but yeah, is everybody all right with that?
Yeah.
I mean, we try it. If it doesn't work, then so be it, but I don't see how it does it.
I think that was one of my first comments when I got on the committee. So, four, five years later, we're there. I love it.
What we'll do is we'll set it up over the summer and we'll email you information about how to access your, the packet, and then we'll try it for the August meeting and we'll have the iPads here and we'll see how it works. Does that sound good?
Anyone has any questions, I'm happy to show you different things you can do with it, so.
Perfect.
Easy peasy.
That's all I have for tonight.
Happy life.
All right. All right, so thank you. So moving on, committee reports. King Philip?
King Philip, we made, at our last meeting we had over in Plainville, or I should say the previous meeting we had over in Plainville, we made a executive decision to take $300,000 from E&amp;D to help support not having to cut any teachers. So we're exactly where we needed to be, finally. It took us a little while.
So then it ended up being the, what was the total request, like 3.2? So I know the numbers changed depending on what town you're looking at, but is it?
Yeah, it was, it was a little above 3.2.
But that, that $300,000 essentially made it four, right?
Yeah. So, and the monies that we were looking for, Rentham or from Plainville, Plainville cut what we were looking for, but we already got an approval through Rentham. So, using that $300,000 at the Plainville meeting allowed us to basically come to where we needed to be.
And what does that leave for E&amp;D going forward?
Minimal money. We're gonna have it certified this fall, but essentially by certification, we'll have about $600,000. Using the monies, we'll be down around two to three, so.
All right.
It's one of those necessary evils.
I don't know what else they could've done at this point.
No, really wasn't anything else we could do. And at that point in time when we're having the meeting over in Plainville, Plainville's position was essentially, we're not gonna cut our budget to the bones just to fund your account, so had to take the money.
Okay. That it for that?
That's it?
Thank you. Policy?
Okay. For a policy, we have a second reading on the administration of medicine to students.
I don't know, do we?
Nothing's changed on it since the first reading.
We didn't have any changes.
There was nothing at all, right?
Also, just to let everyone know, we are in the process of reviewing as per policy our bullying prevention policy. As of right now, we're not at the point of recommending any changes, but we are just getting a little bit of advice on some wording from legal counsel. And also, in the process of breaking up the acceptable use policy into two separate policies, keeping the acceptable use policy as a, guide, I guess, and attach it to these policies so that they, we can update the acceptable use as needed without bringing it to readings, but we still have the new policies in place that will govern the acceptable use policy.
Okay.
I've got nothing else.
That's it?
That's it.
All right. So, let's see. We've got a renewal, a partner renewal for the Lions Club. I think everybody's fairly familiar with them, but they do any number of programs for the schools that the students take advantage of. The soccer, Camp Orndale scholarships, probably one that stands out the most, DARE program, the Honda Train Ride, scholarships, any number of things, so. So do we have a motion to accept or renew Norfolk Lions as a school? So do we have a motion to accept or renew Norfolk Lions as a school partner?
I'm making motion that we renew the Norfolk Lions school partnership.
Second?
Second.
Conversation, discussion? All favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Then we need to vote on the minutes for the 16th meeting?
Motion submitted.
Seconded.
Any further discussion? Seeing none, all favor?
Aye.
Aye.
And then last thing, we're looking, as per our calendar discussion from just a few minutes ago, first meeting for the following school year, because we get July off, yay, August 22nd. Work for everybody.
22nd, I'll be away.
Better. We'll miss you.
Thank you.
Not really. What's that, Jeff, or other Jeff?
I, I'm away the week before, so I'm good. I'm around the 22nd.
All right, so we want to leave it as 22nd with the understanding that Jeff's, I mean, we're going to run it out in the summer, I mean, assuming.
It's hard to get a full committee together in August.
Yeah, I mean, if we move the next week or week before, something going on, so.
Did we get any advice on, well, we discussed last meeting about the membership?
Yes, I did talk to.
Well, hold on, let's finish it. So are we good for the 22nd of August?
Yes.
Not.
With the understanding.
Yeah, I'll be away in business.
We just have a quorum, and then if it falls here, then we've got four, and then we'll see you in September.
Okay.
Okay.
Do you want me to update on the committee membership?
Yeah.
So I did talk to legal counsel, and we, because we have a committee of five, our subcommittees can have no more than two members, because otherwise you would have a quorum of the committee, and any action determined at subcommittee would then really not need further ratification from the committee. You'd be, in fact, making a school committee decision at a subcommittee meeting. So the committee membership can only have two. The chair can participate in, in any of the subcommittees. If that makes the membership three, then the chair would be a non-voting member of that committee unless they're an appointed member of one of two.
Okay. This was, this was a budget?
Budget, right.
It was budget that we were looking at.
And then who, who was it that wanted to, I don't even remember their names.
Yeah, it was going to be me.
Yeah, Jeff and Paul.
Get a shot at budget.
We already had three on there, though, because we had me, Mark, and.
Right, so we would have to decide if, in the past, the chair has been a de facto member of all committees, but there would be a non-voting member of that subcommittee unless they're one of the two appointed. So I think the committee might need to relook at the budget, whether we want to have the chair as a non-voting member, or if you're going to be an active participant, then we would probably need to limit the committee to two. But because budget won't meet till November, we can let that in.
Yeah, I mean, because even if, like say, with a de facto, then we still have three people interested in it, so we still need to figure out two from there. I don't care what the de facto is.
I had mentioned that I would be willing to let him take my spot.
Right, I think we decided it'd be two, and Mark would join if we had.
In turn, I don't want to be just doing one thing, so I don't know if Jeff would be okay with it, but I'd like to take on the legislative rep part. I know you've done it for a while.
Take on what?
The legislative rep part.
That, that's fine. Absolutely fine.
That way, I still got my two things that I'm doing, and, because I don't want to be.
With King Philip, do you mean, or?
Legislative rep.
Okay, yep.
I didn't know the last time, I mean, has anything even happened with that? I mean, because you're a volunteer for something that may not actually, nothing's actually.
It's, here's the situation. So the first meeting I was able to get, well, it took me three years, and I had to go into Boston to meet.
I work in Boston.
Okay.
Shaun is much easier. Shaun's essentially, hey Shaun, you available next week? Yeah, no problem, Jeff, let's meet, and we meet right down the street. Essentially, his are easy, so I usually give about three a year. That's about as many times as he has available. Little more difficult with Senator Ross, he's quite busy, and you kind of just got to work around rescheduling and scheduling and rescheduling. It's just the way it is, so.
All right, well, I mean, from a legislative standpoint, they largely shut down in the summer as well. So why don't, I mean, probably, all right, so now we have guidance on it. I don't want to make a decision without Paul being here, just because this will.
And we probably, there is one other committee. We had a subcommittee to develop an evaluation tool for this superintendent. We had three, it was two members and Shaun, or the chair is a de facto member, but we might want to look at that committee as well. So maybe in August, we should relook at the, the final committee memberships, because a lot of districts, once your evaluation instruments finalized, have a process where everybody contributes to the evaluation and the chair summarizes. So I don't know if you need a subcommittee for that anymore, if you want to look at a different process for that, where you send it out, everybody responds to you, and then.